At 10 o'clock, calling the Planning Commission meeting to order. All the commissioners are present except Larry, Lawrence Henry, and he will arrive shortly, I believe. Due to our short time here, we'll go ahead and get started. If Ted would lead us in the pledge and Lori would offer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father in Heaven, we come before you at the opening of this Planning Commission meeting. We ask thee to please bless us with the spirit of cooperation and please help us that we'll be able to make decisions that will please our city and the residents and future residents and that we'll be able to decide upon what is best. We are grateful for this community, for the good people that live here, and for our opportunity to serve them. And we say this in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ, amen.
I appreciate all of you coming together on short notice and before we had their meeting next week. If there are any changes or adjustments, I wanted to do it before they had their discussion. I know our time is limited, so I'm not going to have any public comment today. The primary reason for coming together is after our meeting last week, I sat, met with Corbett, and he shared some thoughts that I guess in my view, we maybe didn't give as much attention to as we should have in looking at some of the options and alternatives and matters that impact the building height. I know we had some extensive discussion about it all, and that was all good and productive, and I think we're headed in the right way, but I just wanted to, I thought it would be good to invite Corbett and have him share those thoughts with you, and we can have some further discussion about those to see if we want to make any, any changes or not to what we ended up with last week. So with that in mind, I'll turn the time over to Corbett, and he can go ahead and share his thoughts on the matter. Do you have a microphone, Corbett?
There are six more. The biggest concern I have is when it comes to enforcement. If there's, and I've always been told that if there's any ambiguity in the code, state statute requires that the city interpret that code in favor of the property owner. I've never read that, but that's, you know, that's always been my understanding. It makes sense. It forces city, it forces cities to, to keep the code clear and concise and enforceable. And the concern I have is that, at least the way I understand it, in the code that we're proposing, there, there is no reference to lowest natural point in reference to finished grade. And so somebody comes in and they, they, they do a big cut, and it happens all the time. They do a big cut and they haul it off, and if there's, if there's 10 or 15 feet from natural grade to finished grade, if it's 15 feet, they can still go 35 feet above natural grade, which means the house, the house can be 50 feet tall, literally. It can be 50 feet tall. And the question I ask, is that what you want? And if it's not, then I think there needs to be a reference to lowest natural grade, finished grade, whichever is lowest. But if there's not something in there that, that references finished grade, if they, and again, you're building on a hillside, if somebody comes in and cuts that slope away and hauls it off, they can be 50 feet tall. Want me to draw you a picture?
I think we understand, yeah. We've talked about that.
Okay.
Share your thoughts on what the house looks after construction, some of the issues that as far as not the whole design, but how it will look from the street or how it presents itself.
Well, I mean, literally, you could, you could have a four-story house. I mean, again, if that's not what you want, then, then I think it's, I think it would be helpful to reference finished grade someplace.
Corbett, I don't understand how you think there could be a 50-foot house.
Yeah, I think it's, because if you cut down 10 feet into the hill, and you start your house down at that bottom of that cut, now your house starts there, but you're measuring from the natural grade, which is 10 feet above the front door of the house. So you've got 10 feet of house before you even hit natural grade, and then you start measuring from natural grade another 35 feet, that could give you 45 feet of house you're looking at.
That's 45, that's not 50.
Or 15 feet, say they cut out 15 feet, and...
Why would anybody do that?
Yeah, they do it quite often, so...
Not, no, not, not all the way. There's always natural grade on the sides of the house.
But they do walls.
Maybe we just need to take into consideration that they may do that.
They do it all the time. You do, you do a cut.
Show me one house.
Adams.
See, they got a 10-foot wall.
I disagree.
Look at the retaining wall on the, on the orange side of their driveway.
But that's not the house.
But that retaining wall takes away...
That has nothing to do with the height of the house.
Well, it has to do with where you're measuring from, right?
No.
Because technically, right now, if we say they measure from natural grade...
The natural grade is around the perimeter of the house.
Well, they, they cut out the house, though. They cut out that natural grade.
No, they didn't.
That's why they got a 10-foot wall. That's why they got a 10-foot wall.
Where the basement is, and it was inside the natural grade.
Check this out.
Here's their retaining wall.
But the retaining wall has nothing to do with the height of the house.
Sure does.
No, it doesn't.
Sure does.
No.
Because, well, it has to do with where you measure from.
I know that lot. I've watched that lot hundreds of times.
It has to do where you measure from, not the height of the house, but where you're measuring the height of the house from. So what we're saying right now is you can start measuring right here at the top of their retaining wall.
Except that's not the way that lot was. That lot was not like that. That lot was like this.
So they measure from, and here's their edge of the house.
No, no, this is the edge of the house. They're over, they're over here. The basement is actually cut out down here.
But what he's saying is you could do this. Someone could do this with our current code. Whether Adams did it or not, someone could come in here and cut this out now, and their house sits, say they do this as a foundation wall. Now their house is sitting right here, instead of measuring from here, and here's their front door.
But Ted, that's not gonna happen. Nobody wants right there.
Doesn't have to be. They could be sitting 10 feet back.
It's not here, it's 15 or 20.
Well, they could be sitting 15 or 20. The bottom line is, if someone comes in here, and what Corbett's saying, if they come in here and your natural grade looks like this, you can come in here and here's your house from, right? Just like that. Someone comes in and cuts all of this away, so there are finished grades now down here. There's finished grade, there's natural grade, there's a wall, now we're measuring from here.
They're not gonna convince me because people don't do that.
So you got 15 feet there. We're measuring from here right now, right?
Even on the Adams house, even on the Adams house, the natural grade was retained in the front of the house.
Generally speaking, someone could do this, right? Whether they do or not, they could. You're gonna end up with a house down across the street from the church that's 48 feet tall.
Well, but that's because of our current ordinance, not this ordinance.
I still think someone could have a 45-foot tall house.
I agree.
I don't.
Because they could cut that, they could cut that hill away.
Is, is there a need for people to excavate if we just put a limit that the finished grade has to be within a certain number of feet of the, the finished grade has to be within a certain number of feet of the natural grade? Would that solve the problem?
Well, but if, if...
And that was kind of what we talked about last time, I think, was one of the...
If you require the finished grade to be, Mapleton, you mentioned Mapleton, your finished grade has to be within four feet of natural grade, then to me, you really restrict your ability to build on a, on a slow plot.
So there is a need to cut in at times and change it?
I mean, you, you, you take, you take any, any construction and, I mean, Ted, did you talk about balance? Balance in the job site?
Yeah, I kind of talked about, that's how I did with my house, is, is the way I placed my house on the site. I wanted to balance the cut and fill for that very reason, so I didn't have a big cut into the hillside and a 10-foot retaining wall.
When a developer comes in and builds all the houses in a development, he wants to build as economically as possible. So you'll go in a lot of times and you'll see that they'll build the roads up. Well, then the lots are down here low, and then they dig a basement, they take all those spoils and they spread them out. So eventually, the driveways are flat, the lots are flat, with the road that started out being built up. And so you, you build a house, and, and you, you try to take and balance, this is cut, and then this is fill. And if that balances, then you have a net zero, and that's a lot cheaper to build that way.
That you don't have to haul off.
Right? I mean, I don't know if you heard of Maurice Rokovitz, he complained about having to, he spent $45,000 on excavation that he wasn't planning on spending. So he spent his budget, and then he spent another $45,000 because he had to haul so much material off. I mean, sometimes you can't avoid that, but if you can get it to balance, then you're by far better off. And balancing is what you have to do when you build on a hillside. Because if you, if you put that house just about anywhere, you're going to have cuts and fills. And if your cuts and fills can balance each other out, you save money. But if they can't, or if you don't care, or if you're limited on the slope of the lot, on the, how steep it is, then you do whatever you have to do to make it work. So...
If the term was used, natural lowest grade or finished grade, would that address...
Whichever is lower.
Whichever is lowest, yeah. Yes.
I, I think it would take more of the opportunity to build huge houses away. But if you just go from natural, from natural lowest point, and I come in and I cut this out, and, and even if I just cut it out here, and then I, code set, building code says that you have to slope away from the structure, minimum 5% for the first 10 feet. So he's required to maintain drainage away from the house for the first 10 feet. Then he gets, he does a retaining wall or whatever, but where's that measurement? That measurement is vertical, right? Isn't that what we're trying to do, is say, from any vertical point? So no matter what, whatever this distance is from here to here, I go from, from here up, I go plus 35 feet. If you don't...
Well, no.
That's the natural grade.
This is natural grade, right here is where natural grade hit the, hit the building footprint.
Except, the only way you would measure that is if it was a flat roof, and then it's only 30 feet.
Now, if he went up to a peaked roof on using that natural grade coming straight down, and he's got 35 feet to go upwards...
No, now you're not measuring to there, but you're not, but you're measuring, in that situation, you're not measuring from here, you're measuring from here down to here.
Okay.
Straight can't, no.
Make that a gable in. Make that a gable in and not a dash, yeah. Then you measure from this point right here.
That's a flat roof, though.
No, not a gable.
If it's a gable, you're not going to measure in there, you're not going to measure out here.
It depends on whether the gable...
But it still doesn't change the fact, still doesn't change the fact that you're measuring from the natural grade rather than where the actual house is, right?
And that's, that's all I'm asking.
So...
Is that if you have a situation like Severance Wright, I think you're over it, because you're measuring, even if you're measuring from the highest point right here, you're still measuring the right here, right?
For the natural grade.
And the house is sitting down here. So then you've got that difference there that you add to the 35 feet, it could be 40, 45 feet tall.
Well, and you...
For these houses.
So the finished, the finished grade we're referencing is down to the bottom of that point. So it brings, it brings, it forces the houses to look not as tall.
Right.
They're bringing it down to that.
Well, but then you're, you're gonna run into trouble further on down the hip on that roof line, because it's where the tallest point, so as that slope comes down, the reference line comes down, as you move across that hip that's that way, you're gonna run in, it's gonna be above 35 feet, and you're gonna have to lower it.
Which is fine, but they could still go higher on the one side.
Following that, following that natural grade is gonna force them to build with the slope anyways. But that natural grade right there...
The picture, the Park City picture.
The only...
You're not going to find a, a hip that's right at the edge of the house that doesn't extend somewhere along that ridge.
But let's say it does, even. Let's say it does.
Talking about a telescoping roof, where it's at this level, and you lower it in this level, and you lower it in this level. That's building along the slope.
But you could have...
The highest point is the last point on that hip, and that's where you're gonna measure it from. Not the edge of the house out there, but you're gonna measure it over here down, and it's down the slope, so it has to bring it down.
Which is fine, but what if we changed the cut? So it's, if it changes that, then you could still be 40, 45 feet tall with a house.
If you come in here and cut all that dirt away...
I mean, we're talking semantics.
Your, your natural grade is still right there, and so if there is no reference to lowest natural point or finished grade, whichever's lower, then I still get to take advantage of this distance here as a bonus in the height of my house.
Even if that's moved into the building a little bit, like you're saying, Severance, I get your point.
Let's say, let's say right here, Sir, I know what you're saying, sir. I don't think you're, let's say your highest point's right here, and this slopes like this, right? Here's your house. Let's just draw. Well, let's say your cut's like this. You're measuring from here to here, it's 35 feet, right? But your front door sits down here, and here's the bottom of your, bottom of your house. You cut this away, that distance gets added to that 35 feet, so your house could really be 40, 45 feet tall.
But it's still complying because it's 35...
But if, but if...
What we can look at is, they could actually cut this away and the bottom of their house is right here, the front door.
But if you include a finished grade... I don't see anybody doing that.
Really could.
Well, I can show you two houses close to these seven.
Where?
Right across my street.
I'm out, I'm through.
So...
Look at it, because you can see the side of the original slope here, and it drops down.
The cut at the back of the house on the Ellsworth home, the cut at the back of the home from native grade just to get to the main floor is 13 feet tall. That's, so the main floor is 13 feet lower than the, than the native grade at the back wall of the house.
But you don't see the back, you see the front.
But they can still do it, so...
Which is another 10 feet.
So we're, we're talking really semantics here. I guess the question is, what are we trying to do? Restrict the, the building height above the natural grade or just restrict the overall height? Because if it's the overall height, then I, I would agree, we need to add finished grade into that definition. If it's just the height above natural grade, then...
If, if we take this, we take this example here, if, if the point is up here, the highest point of the roof, we're taking it, if we use the lowest of the finished or natural, on this side, we're taking it down to the finished grade here. As this starts to continue down the slope, if this slope is here, then we're taking it to the finished grade.
No, you're still...
No, the fill, no, the lowest, the natural lowest, which is here.
You're still following.
You're still following the contour.
Worst case in both.
Now, this is the lowest point, so the measurement is from here to here. Where up here, the measurement is from here to here. So it shifts if we use the lowest of the two, finished or natural grade. So we're, I guess the idea here is, what is, what do we want that house to look like?
Yeah.
And it could comply if we, if we don't use finished grade, but it'll be, it'll be, it'll look a lot taller than it really is according to our ordinance. It can still be 35 feet, but potentially, it could have, look as, it could have three stories on it possibly, and would look taller than what it actually is.
It would be taller, could be taller. Could be taller than 35 feet.
I mean, it could comply with our...
But it's still complying with the ordinance.
Right now, look at Jex, look at Dolls, all right? In front of those two houses, or three stories high, or a third or a half of them, of the frontage view of an eagle nest.
Do we want that?
And that's, that's part of it. Now, I think since the next one out, their basement is all below. There's none of their basement that shows from the front. But the two houses next to it, and the house on the other side, the ranchers, the basement
That's the question, I guess, do we want that?
You're looking this way, you're building into the slope instead of from the other side. Well, but part of it too, the slope on those lots is both this way and this way. And so that's why you've got a third or a fourth or a half of the house that's really below grade.
And you're going to see that because you're looking into the slope. But on the opposite side of the street, where it's the back of the house that shows, you're not going to see it. Unless it's from the neighborhood, or the park, or someone's...
You know, in my opinion, the biggest problem with God, and the way the definition is now, is those where the lowest part is in the front. I mean, technically, that's not a basement. That's a story.
It's according to your code.
According to your code, a basement is four feet below the natural, below the finished grade at the front of the house.
It doesn't say front.
Yes, it does.
Average contact.
No, it's, there's no average in there anywhere. You show me where it says average. It does not say average. I mean, Tony pointed that to us the other week.
You and I were arguing about this.
It does not say average.
Let's read title, Pam, if, um, the, don't need my...
There are two places you've got to...
It's not in the height.
One is on basement definition, and the other one is finished grade definition.
Read first story definition.
Finished grade is the elevation of the finished surface of the ground adjoining the building after final grading and normal settlement at the front of the building.
It's finished grade?
That's finished grade.
So when you've got a slope, the back of the house is higher than the front, how do you have a basement? It's gotta be down in.
All that's doing is defining what finished grade is.
Right, but our basement defines, basement uses that term. It says basement or cellar, the space of a building where the floor level is more than four feet below the adjoining finished grade. So finished grade is measured at the front of the building, so that translates back into the definition of a basement.
How much is a basement?
It doesn't say.
Then you'll...
It says nothing.
Then you'll never build another two-story house in this city. Two-story is, I mean, nobody in the world defines a basement as a story above grade. But if the finished grade, if the finished grade is within four feet of the floor level, then it's a story above grade, it's, then it's, then it's not...
That's my argument, Corbett.
And, and that's, and that's what I'm saying.
That's why we need to change the ordinance that exists now, because those houses where the back is lower than, higher than the front, and they have two stories, one, two stories of, well, above grade, and one, well, below grade, that one really is another story. And you've got three stories.
What's the definition of a first story?
First story says, as applied to residential districts, means the lowest story or the ground story of any building, the floor of which is less than four feet below the average contact ground level at the exterior walls of the building.
So my point is, is it a first story or is it a basement? Because your code conflicts.
That's been a debate.
I understand. That's why we need to fix it.
And if your code conflicts, you have to, you have to...
You go.
...favor of the property owner. So is that a basement or is it first story? It doesn't meet the definition of a first story because the average contact ground level is more than four feet below grade. And so it has to be a basement. But it doesn't meet the definition of a basement. But it also doesn't meet the definition of a first story. So what is it? I get to decide as the property owner, because you have to let me interpret the code in my favor if there's any ambiguity in it. Regardless, we don't, we don't, we don't limit stories. We've taken that out. I, I think, I think you ought to put it back in. I think you ought to limit three stories from finished grade or whatever. Because if you don't, and I want to cut out, and, and more and more houses are being built with no budgets at all. They, they build what they want because it's what they want. And they come in and they put in 15-foot retaining walls, because that's what it takes.
Which is what we're trying to avoid.
Mm-huh.
Well, and so if, if, if they're visible retaining walls...
Extreme cases like that. And, and we want to reduce those situations.
You're going to have situations that are, that, that, if you, if you reference finished grade or natural grade, whichever is lowest, you're going to have situations where you're gonna have to grant a variance. There are gonna be few and far between, in my opinion, but...
Why, why would we grant a variance?
Who's the guy that lives on the end of Oak Circle? Wayne? Or, did he graffit a house?
Ripley? On Oak Circle?
Oak Circle. The newest house out on the end past Doral's house.
Yeah, Doral told me about that once.
His, his basement walls are 16 feet tall below the basement slab, just to get to the, to native ground. So his, the back wall, the back foundation wall of this house is 16 feet tall. So where's native grade? I mean, it's a rambler, but you take 16 feet of foundation wall just to get to native grade, and you take a 10-foot basement, you're 26 feet, you take a 10-foot main floor, you're 36 feet, and put the roof on top of it? You're gonna have to grant a variance. But I, I would suggest that that's a better idea than making it so you can build that house anywhere else in town. And, and that's what you're getting when you, when you can cut and you still measure from native grade to the highest point of the structure. Make it so restricted that they can't build it. And then they come back to you and say, "Look, I can't, I can't even build a rambler." And then you have to grant a variance, or you buy their property. It's called a takings by restrictions. So give them a variance, and that's okay. But if you make it so, if you make it liberal enough that you can build that house anywhere, you're going to end up with sky rises. Here's what we want to do. And that's the dilemma with any ordinance, is you're always going to have situations or conditions that the ordinance just doesn't work for that property.
And the better that than...
That makes it liberal.
Yeah, being liberal, I agree.
We've read a lot of ordinances that do have the wording natural or finished grade, whichever is lowest in their ordinance. And that, that, in those situations, that seems to be an acceptable alternative to, to, to use that. And, um, so that might be something that we...
And I, you know, as we've discussed this, I'm I probably have a negative one in here right now, but I think that, uh, the lower of natural and finished grade, I, I think that's acceptable.
Yeah, I agree with Severin. I think it's acceptable.
I do too. I, I would also like to see at the very beginning how to say, no house can be taller than thirty-five feet above natural or finished grade, whichever is lower, just at the beginning, and then go on and explain.
I don't, I don't know that you, if you, if you'll limit that to thirty-five feet, I don't know that you need to worry about telling a limitation on stories above grade. Building code does that for you. Building code says you have to have a minimum ceiling height of seven feet. Um, and so, you're not going to get four-story houses because you physically can't do it within that, within that...
And I would agree. I think if we do that, we don't add stories. Don't reference stories if we do the natural or finished grade, whichever is lower. Then you're really, are limiting the stories just by that definition alone.
What does that do then to our, if we, if we perceive that, what does that do to the natural grade line, reference line?
Reference line.
Does that do away with that? And we, we just measure similar to the Mapleton uh, thing, from the highest peak down to the natural grade or finished grade, whichever is lower throughout, throughout the whole...
Wherever in the building.
Yeah, but what bothers me about that is that you can have a finished grade that goes like that. I mean, there are a lot of the houses. I mean, that's kind of the finished grade on the Adams, the finished grade on the Larson's house. It goes like this, and then it drops off like that. I think, well, I don't, I am a builder, I thought that's all the way through yet. But it seems to me that, that we can still have, we can have a natural grade reference line, or a finished grade reference line. And whichever is lower, is the one we use.
And that could, yeah, whichever is lower, I guess you'd have to say without, within the envelope of the house, or the building footprint of the house. Because that could change, yeah.
So you measure what the finished grade is going to be at the highest point, and what the finished grade is at the lowest point, and that's a reference line. And then you've got the natural highest point, and the natural lowest point, and that one's a reference line, and whichever reference line is lower is the one that you measure from.
Mapleton kind of did that with their, with this diagram. They've got a dotted line which represents the...
Natural.
I think it's a natural, it was learned small here. And the solid line represents the finished grade. And they have kind of both those, I think I put a copy of this on your desk, both those running through through the structure. If we want to do that, take that reference line approach.
Where did this one example come from?
It came from the Kevin Price, who's going to be one of the builder home designers in Summer Creek. And it's tailored after the Park City uh, ordinance.
And I kind of like it, and kind of see where there could be some issues with it, but it's probably going to be that with every case.
It has, this one has the contour lines running through the footprint of the home, and that's what they use as their measurements, down to that particular contour line. They don't use a reference line.
Yeah.
They just use directly down to...
The contour is before, it's, it's natural?
Yeah.
Yes.
The only thing I would see there is, once again, it comes, comes back to that issue, if your natural grade does this, then that, and your house is sitting here outside of that dip. Now, instead of having a line like this, your contours are doing this, which they'd have to fill that in. Maybe that becomes finished, to, to build a house on it.
Yes.
So then maybe that becomes finished grade. Well, no, because your natural grade would be lower. So technically, they would have to go all the way down to the bottom of that dip and measure up, which could be a bit of an issue in building a house. So I, I do like the grade line, I think, a little bit.
Reference line?
Reference line. Just because it takes those issues away, but...
There'd be two reference lines then that we would have, whichever is lowest.
Yeah.
As shown on the...
Natural grade, finished grade, whichever is lowest, as, as an introductory...
Well, I just think at the very beginning, say, no house can be taller than thirty-five feet over whichever line we're using. Just, just that one sentence at the beginning, and then go on and explain.
Indicate the detail.
Yeah.
Then following that statement.
Are there any ambiguities existed in the current, or that exist in the current ordinance that are carried over into this new proposed building height definition? Are there any ambiguities in our new one? I think if we, I didn't do the natural or or finished grade.
Takes care of that.
Takes care of it.
I mean, you've got, obviously, if you don't change the definitions, there's still ambiguity, but if you don't reference that story, first story or basement, it doesn't matter. I don't care how many stories tall it is.
As long as it stays.
Finished grade, and...
Or natural.
We don't care if you call your basement a first story, or if you call your first story a basement, it doesn't matter.
Right.
That's what, that was one discussion. Several times we wanted to get rid of that.
You see anything, any other concerns or issues if we adopt that that wording?
Well, again, we talked a little bit about where do you measure from? You measure from opposite sides?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you for, I spaced that. You saw that one diagram that I sent out of that one home, that's got all different kinds of sides and stuff to it. And that's, that's not unusual. We've seen some... Yeah, more and more it's getting, and, and Summer Creek is going to be designing those kinds of homes a lot over there.
Well, and I, I think, what I said in the email, I think, I still believe. I mean, you basically have multiple opposite sides. And whichever opposite side is the highest and lowest, that's the one you use for the grade reference line.
But you don't say that. You say the highest and lowest from opposite sides, but which opposite side?
I mean...
Well, I think, doesn't it say find the highest, highest elevation point adjoining the building? So you take the highest point, I actually just drew some lines across here while we were talking, but you take the highest point anywhere around the building, you find the highest point, then you draw a line straight through the house to the other, to the opposite side.
Straight. I mean, you, see with this structure here, take this little, little box off, on the very end. You could actually draw...
I mean, you could draw a line, if you take that, the box is further to the top of the sheet, and say that's the highest, and the lowest is down on the corner of that garage, which is on the far left, and you draw a line from there down to there, it's still an opposite side. It may or may not be directly opposite, but it's opposite.
So you end up with, instead of perpendicular lines to the home?
They may be... But it's still opposite.
That's where I, I guess I was having trouble conceptualizing our definition with the terms that we used, opposite one side or the other, where you've got twelve, fifteen sides here.
Okay, I'm opposite you. I'm opposite him. I'm opposite Tony. And yet, we're all different, and it's not a ninety-degree. And we didn't say ninety-degree. We just said opposite. Ted's opposite. Tony's opposite, Wayne's opposite.
The question is though, with that, have we created confusion? Because if I'm an engineer and I see, read opposite side, immediately I'm just thinking, okay, directly acrossed.
Yeah.
But if I have a question on that, now I've got to call the city and say, okay, give me your definition of opposite. Is it directly acrossed? Is it just any side, any point opposite of the side I'm measuring from? That, I could see that being a question mark. I would, I would have to ask somebody, and I think my goal is that someone could read it, not have to ask a question.
But therein lies some ambiguity. The person saying, well, this is my opposite.
Yeah.
And it's over here, it's not directly across. So, that's a problem we have now with...
But if it's high to low, what difference do we make?
We don't say low, we just say high going opposite, is all we say.
To the lowest.
To, uh, the low point opposite.
My point is, you don't even go there. Just say the highest and lowest points, and you, that's your grade point.
Yeah.
The highest and lowest points is your grade point.
I agree.
That was my argument last time, and I lost.
Because I said it could be on the same side!
Would you say...
I'll recant, and, and I'll go with Severin on this one, because I, I think that's got to be the...
The problem here is, um, so Clark Kessler, his property, his property goes, I mean, he's two or two and a half acres, and it drops like a rock and goes all the way down to Logan Canyon Road behind his house.
Right.
If you don't define where you take those measurements from...
Well, we've, we've defined it as the perimeter of that structure.
You still, to me, you still need to take the measurements at the building footprint, or the perimeter of the building.
Adjoining the building is what we say.
But just take highest and lowest points and leave all the other stuff out.
I agree. I think I'm getting to agree with that. Severin? I recant, I'm agreeing with you on this one.
Now, if I could get three other people... Then we have...
I was disagreeing.
Because I, I think if we go, if, 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 given this example, if you go opposite, then you're into the ambiguity of what's opposite. And if we just eliminate that by saying a high point and the lowest point, whether that's on one side, between those two, becomes your reference line.
Either the natural reference...
Or finished. Well, that's, yeah, that's, I think that's okay. Yeah. And the more I think about it, I think that's probably fine.
When the slope's side to side, yeah, it's that highest and lowest point, it's all on the front of the house.
I think I'm getting to agree with that. Because it also will help eliminate, or keep the building height down too, because if we say the highest point and a low point opposite that, and if you're saying opposite directly across, that actually is not the low, it may not be the lowest point on the property, or adjoining the house, excuse me. Which means you could have a little bit taller house on one side.
You don't say that can't go deeper.
Yeah.
You don't say that it can't go deeper, so it can go deeper.
So if we just say the high and low, that actually helps keep the houses down a little bit, regardless of where it's at.
Again, if, if you, if you rein it in, and you, and you control, get the control that you, that you want, so you have the outcome that you want, if there's something that doesn't work, then grant a variance.
Any, any rat variances on those things?
Sure. It's not my fault. It's not my fault your code says I can't even build a house. Or that I have to build a house that's totally below grade in order to, in order to be, not, to not be thirty-five feet tall at the back of the house. Next slide, if you go to the Dolph Carson Outbridge. There's a house on that road, Last End Drive, I used to be the building inspector for Outbridge. There's a house on Last End Drive, it's the third house from the main road that goes up to the top. That house is five stories on the back of the house because the property just drops like a rock. When they cut the road in, they probably cut the road in too far downhill and didn't leave enough space for a building to that. That house has three basements. I mean, they're just, the lower two are just, or the lowest one is just a storage room.
But it's still...
But it's, I mean, look at that house. And then the house next door, they built up the pad with structural fill, they brought it in, they, they bring it in lifts, they compact it, they do all the testing required, they brought in twenty-five feet of fill at the back of the house. But the next, the guy next door, he just poured foundation and put storage for his house.
My daughter built a house in Springville, this below the light spot on the west side of that street. And the lot was like this, and then and on the back of her house, there is basically a story and a quarter, or maybe a story and a half of foundation walls below the basement. So you look at the back, I mean, she really only has two floors. You know, she's got a basement, she's got an upper level, but you look at the back, and it's probably, it may be fifty feet high. I mean, we love to go there on the Fourth of July, we can see the fireworks all over the valley.
Look, I mean, it happens. And that's why I say, are you going to restrict something like that? Yes, you are. But, but you can, you can grant, you can grant a variance. That way the variances are going to be a lot fewer than the houses that are way too tall.
Well, Wayne, you've got it changed.
I'm working on it. I want to read it to everybody, so that we can come out of this meeting with what it says. We need your help here. Let's see.
Now, did you know that left-handed people are more detail-oriented?
Did you know we're also the only ones in our right mind? And think about that one for a minute.
Yes. Okay. Let's try to take it piece by piece here. The height of a building is measured from any and all points of the roof ridges and peaks on a structure to the natural grade reference line, or the finished grade reference line, whichever is lowest directly below that point.
I like it.
So far.
Do we want us... Okay, go ahead. We'll finish it.
Natural grade is defined as a grade prior to any construction or land disturbance. A natural grade reference line will be drawn from the highest natural grade point adjoining the structure at any point around the perimeter of the structure to the lowest natural grade point at any point around the perimeter adjoining the structure.
Did you say highest on the first one?
The first one would be the highest.
Okay, and you said the highest, though?
The highest, and then...
Yeah, he said highest.
And then the lowest. Then the natural grade... And then the finished grade.
And, and I think the finished grade sentence is basically the same as the natural grades sentence, except where it says natural, you put finished. Everything else is the same.
Natural grade reference line, or... Natural grade reference line or
Finished grade.
Finished grade reference line will be drawn.
I'm sure feeling a lot better today than I did last week. I mean, about this.
Okay. This natural, this natural grade reference line will be this natural grade reference line or finished grade reference line will be visually projected through the entire footprint of the structure. The building height will be measured from the highest roof ridge or peak directly downward to any point along the natural grade reference line or finished grade.
Reference line.
Reference line.
Whichever is lower.
Whichever is lower.
And has been extended.
Which has been extended throughout the structure footprint.
Good.
In order for a house in a residential zone to meet the height limit, no point on the roof ridge or peak on the structure may be higher than 35 feet measuring from the highest roof ridge or peak to the natural grade reference line or finished grade.
Reference line.
Reference line. Whichever is lower directly below that roof ridge or peak.
Yep.
And flat roofs must be no more than 30 feet.
Okay, I have a question. Can we, where you define a natural grade reference line is defined as, could we call it something like the measurement reference line and say whichever is lower and define it right at the beginning? And then throughout the paragraph, instead of saying finished grade, the measurement reference line or the whatever, the, the reference line? That way we don't have to repeat ourselves so many times?
Because you're really going to establish two different grade reference lines when you look at the plan.
Yes.
I think what Lori's saying, and I, I, maybe something to think about, saying right up front, say, is measure to the reference line. The reference line is the lowest point. Then you define finished grade line, natural grade line. And then through the rest of the paragraph, instead of always saying the natural or finished reference line, you're just saying the reference line, because you've already defined it. But I don't know that that, maybe it's not, not something bad to think about. So you're giving one definition for the reference line, and then after that, you just call it reference line.
Yeah.
You don't have to keep defining it every time you mention it.
Whichever is lower.
Highest finished grade, lowest finished grade.
Natural grade.
That red line is your finished grade reference. And then I come in and I put in a retaining wall and I put a walkout on the front of the house to the basement. My reference line is still up here. Because that's finished grade highest point, the finished grade lowest point. But I can still come in here with another retaining wall and still end up with the house that's 40 feet tall, 45 feet tall.
And you get out of your front door. Have steps coming up to the natural.
Cut around it?
I put a deck right there.
But the door's down below it.
This is the basement.
And that's the front of the house.
Yeah, that's my point. But by putting a retaining wall in here, I can do it, a deck on the front of the, I could do a deck on the 15th south, within the drive.
Now, if, if not, we defined somewhere that the finished grade could not be more than four feet?
I don't think.
Yeah, I don't think we've done that.
But if you just take away this.
That would eliminate that problem.
But yeah, but it would also make it really harder because I can't put a retaining wall in here and, and change that for the four feet.
Right.
Do we care? We just don't want this house to look like it's got a grade. And so if you take out that reference line on the finished grade portion, then I can't do this. Because I'm gonna measure, I'm, I'm not gonna measure from the reference line when I'm doing finished grade. I'm gonna measure from the lowest natural point, or the lowest finished grade. As, instead of the reference.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. And so we just say natural grade reference line or finished grade adjoining the house. I, I, I can see his point there. I would agree with that, because.
What does that do?
But wait a minute, if you're, if you're measuring.
Does it interrupt the?
So I guess if you're measuring anywhere along the grade line, finished grade line.
So your finished grade line is here, you're right, but it could be from here where you're actually finished grade.
So it pushes it up?
Pushes it up. So if you say finished grade, natural grade reference line or finished grade. And that way that eliminates this issue of putting in this wall. Versus a grade line.
Finish, the reason we get the natural grade finished line, excuse me, natural grade line was to avoid the ups and downs with the natural grade. With finished grade, we control that.
Yeah.
It can be a point. It doesn't have to be a line projected. Because finished grade, they're, they're gonna control.
It's totally manipulative.
Yeah.
If it's manipulated, all I gotta do is put in a retaining wall.
Do you ever have these, bring in so much dirt that they raise the finished grade, though?
Well, but it doesn't matter, because natural grade would be lower then. When you're measuring from the lower. But this, with a finished grade, you wouldn't have the issue of coming along and having this. Because no one's gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna fill that in to finish the grade. So you have a natural grade reference line, which eliminates that issue. But your natural grade, or your finished grade's gonna just automatically eliminate that issue. So I would agree.
So we would not use the reference line in conjunction with that finished grade throughout the definition.
It would just be finished grade adjoining the house.
Yes.
Adjoining the structure, I guess. Yeah, I would agree with that.
So now how do we read the whole thing?
Okay, let's, let's.
Take in those three recommendations.
The height of a building is measured from any and all points of the roof ridges and peaks on a structure to the natural grade reference line or the finished grade directly below that point. Whichever is lowest, or whichever is lowest to that point. I don't know which way. I'll have to look at it again and see which is, which.
I, I think whichever is lowest is probably the issue.
Which, below that point, whichever is lowest.
Yep.
The natural grade is defined as a grade prior to any construction or land disturbance. Now that, that possibly is something that we could take it out and put it in the definition, or make sure that that's the definition of our natural grade, or we can leave it in here.
I don't, I, I think it, I think it's better to leave it in, so that everything is in that definition. I don't have to go somewhere else to pick it up like we do now.
So then continue. The natural grade reference line or finished grade will be drawn, let's see.
I think you need two separate sentences for that.
The natural grade reference line will be drawn from the highest natural grade point adjoining the structure at any point to the lowest natural grade point. To the lowest natural grade at any point around the perimeter.
Uh, what if you put?
Around the adjoining perimeter of the structure.
What if you put the highest point and the lowest point will have a line drawn between them?
Say that again. The highest.
The highest and lowest points will have a line drawn between them.
Which line is the natural grade?
Reference line.
A line will be drawn between the highest and lowest points.
Finalize it now.
If you can finalize it and then send us a copy.
Yes, yes, sure. I did before.
Now, before we talked about Ted running this definition by some of his colleagues, did you do that, or have you done that? With what result?
No, I haven't done that yet. I probably shouldn't have approved the line commission. Before I start getting him headed down one road and then switch to a different road. I'll wait till we come up with the final final.
I still would like to know what they have. It's understandable to them.
We got a guy who does a lot of.
Okay, Wayne, a line will be drawn between the highest and lowest natural grade points adjoining the structure.
Line will be drawn between the highest and.
Lowest natural grade point. Adjoining the structure.
Or around the perimeter.
I like that, yeah.
The perimeter of the structure.
Yeah.
The central state. I sound very.
The perimeter of the structure.
Could be some distribution. What part is that? Could be some distribution. We have ones that look.
This natural grade reference line will be visually projected through the entire footprint of the structure.
And all of them is here.
Need to put in the finished grade. Is it here?
No, it's zoom.
Oh, oh, oh.
I just wanted to take a zoom in.
Yeah, no, that's, okay. Yeah. Okay, all right.
I'm agreeing with the whole concept.
Yes.
Well, again, I feel much better about this where you. Okay, you guys. All right, we'll stop.
Okay. All right. The building is measured from any and all points of roof ridges and peaks on a structure to the natural grade reference line or or, or natural grade reference line below that point or the finished grade whichever is lowest.
Yeah.
Now, before you head the natural grade reference line or
Or the finished grade. We've taken out reference line. Do the measurement directly below that point.
Right.
Natural grade is defined as a grade prior to any construction or land disturbance. Then this is where we say a line will be drawn between the highest and lowest natural grade points around the perimeter of the structure. Then we say this natural grade reference line will be visually projected through the entire footprint of the structure. Directly downward to any point along the natural grade reference line or finished grade whichever is lower. Now I want to say the building height was measured from the highest roof ridge or peak directly downward to any point along the natural grade reference line which has been extended throughout the footprint structure or the final grade whichever is lower. Then in order for a house in a residential zone to meet the height limit, no point of the roof ridge or peak on the structure may be higher than 35 feet measuring from the highest roof ridge or peak to the natural grade reference line directly below that roof ridge or peak or to the finished grade whichever is lower. Okay, let me read it again. The height of a building is measured from any and all points of the roof ridges and peaks on a structure to the natural grade reference line or to the finished grade whichever is lowest below that point.
Would it be more simple to put all points on the roof ridges and peaks to the natural grade reference lot, no. Let's see, will be measured roof rib, ridges and peaks on a structure to whichever is lower of, and then put the.
Okay.
Is that easier?
I, I like that. On the structure.
To whichever is lower of, and then list the reference liner of the finished grade.
Whichever is lower between or on we're going to the natural grade reference line. Whichever is lower of.
Yeah.
When we can start rolling, Corbett?
What week of May?
Middle of May?
First week of May. That's what the contractor told us. Just for the water well. Right now, it's looking like the contractor is gonna do we're gonna spend all the money in the water project contract to do oak cul-de-sacs on the west side. Oak cul-de-sacs on the west side. And we're patching on Valley View. And like east, West Lakeview and West Spring. And we're ultimately taking road money. What's left of the road bond that we took down last year or whatever it was. And then what was in the road budget to do spring. East spring.
That's you, isn't it?
Let me say, a line will be drawn between the highest and lowest natural grade points around the perimeter of the structure.
How about on the perimeter?
Say again?
On the perimeter.
Not around?
Yeah, I think on.
Okay, on the perimeter of the structure. This, this natural grade reference line will be visually projected throughout the entire footprint of the structure. The building height will be measured from the highest roof ridge or peak directly downward to any point along the natural grade reference line or the finished grade whichever is lower. We need the reference line which has been extended throughout the structure footprint or the finished grade whichever is lower. In order for a house in a residential zone to meet the height limit, no point of the roof ridge or peak on the structure may be higher than thirty-five feet measuring from the highest roof ridge or peak to the natural grade reference line directly below that roof ridge or peak or to the finished grade whichever is lower.
I would just add at the beginning, homes must be thirty-five feet or less, right at the beginning and then and then put everything else we have.
Or let's see, building height.
Or thirty for flat roofs, are we still doing that?
Say again?
Or thirty for flat roofs.
Okay.
Are we still doing that?
Building height is limited to thirty-five feet or thirty feet if
Now, remember our discussion last week where we talked about when do we measure with a flat roof? Because, I mean, Ted talked about those that have a parapet around them and the roof maybe two feet below the parapet.
I think we measure from the highest point of the parapet.
The top of the parapet.
Well, the parapet's here and the roof is down here.
Measure from the top point of the structure.
Okay.
Building height is limited to thirty-five feet or thirty feet if the structure has a flat roof. And then, and then it's defined the tallest or the peak, that's where the measurement is from. So that would it's not the roof that's being measured, it's the top of the
The top part.
Yeah, the
Part of the structure.
The structure.
Now, there are exceptions, right, like Tim, these.
Yes, those aren't
It's not a roof ridge or peak.
Those aren't part of the calculation. Same thing.
Even those chickens.
How about a popula? That one, that one house, that one on Lindland Hills, going down the hill and has a little popula that sticks up. You measure to the top of one of those.
That's not
Not a roof ridge or peak?
Yeah. Okay, so, we'll start off with that. And then go into the height of the building is measured.
I could upsend it out, I still move. Now, do we have to rescind?
Yes, I think so. Yeah. We'll take a vote on that.
So you wanna make a motion?
We'll bring Ted back in. Laurie, could you go say Ted's available to come back in for a minute? Do the, do this.
I traded my Miya in for a Jag.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah. It's ninety-eight. Twenty, twenty-three years old.
Oh, really?
Boy, that's sixty-three thousand miles.
How many miles?
Sixty-three thousand.
Oh, really?
Pretty good Jag.
We're gonna take a vote here, so. I'll get back in. So, we, we wanna
Hey, I, I will move that we rescind our previous motion regarding the height of the building.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
No opposed? All right, let's rescind previous motion. Okay.
I move that we accept the proposed building height.
Definition?
Definition. Whatever it's called.
As previously read.
As just read.
Okay, this is second, and the second for Severin. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And you're gonna send that out, right Wayne?
I will type that up here within the next couple hours and send a copy out to everybody.
Okay. We've seen that there may be some type of changes or whatever we need to do.
Yeah, or if you feel that I've gotten wording mixed up, let me know. As we read it.
I'm ready for a motion to adjourn.
No, well, let me share just a little bit of comment with you. You, so that we understand. Particularly Ted and Laurie. When we have these public hearings with the city on ordinances that we do, everybody here is perfectly free to add their comment to those meetings. Don't feel, if you have views different than what may come out of a planning commission meeting, I mean, they, all our decisions are not necessarily gonna be unanimous and you may have opposing views and that's certainly fine, but I want you to make, I want to make sure that you understand that you're free to express those views, how, whatever you feel, not necessarily representing the planning commission, but as residents of the city in public hearings that the city council has. So I, I didn't want you to feel that you needed to be silent because you're on the planning commission and maybe you have different views and what comes out of this. That's fine and you're free to express those in other public hearings that the city council has.
And I, I think Wayne makes a good point that I think to some extent there has been a reticence for the planning commission members to make comment in the public hearing with the city council because we had all this discussion in here. And you may get a lot of flack about the planning commission and the decision that we are recommending, what we're recommending to the city council. And I don't think that it's outside of our individual responsibilities as citizens to maybe even say something in support of what the commission has said. Because you're probably, we'll probably get a lot of negatives about it. And, and I think we feel, feel pretty strongly that this is a good change to the building height definition. And then if we feel like we need to say something in that public hearing, we shouldn't be reticent in doing that just because we're part of the planning commission.
Well, I do feel a lot better with this discussion today. That's kinda like Larry, I left here last week thinking, okay, I like where we got, but I don't know, was I was right settled in saying this is exactly what I think, you know, we needed to be, so. So this discussion day's been really good and I'm feeling better leaving today knowing that now I think we're encouraging building heights that aren't excessive, as well as addressing these issues with cutting out hillsides and promoting building with slopes and stuff like that. I think this one addresses that issue better, so I'm feeling better about it, but no one's ever scared me, so I'm always afraid to speak, I, I'm never afraid to speak my mind.
I appreciate Corbett coming in and we probably should have maybe involved him a little sooner than we did in the process. I'm glad he got ahold of me last, last week and expressed some thoughts on it because I think that's helped us further fine tune what we wanted to, what we wanted to do. No, you're through. No, go ahead.
You know, we talked about, we talked about measuring we talked about measuring the roof. I call it a dead chip, I don't know what it's called, but if you look at the front of the house in the house, we look at measuring it from this point to this point, whatever that is, right?
Yes.
No, no.
Well, it's
Straight down.
No, well, that's
Yeah, yeah.
So that line goes right here.
Correct, yeah.
But we're going from that point right there. Now, what if you look at the what if you take that measurement and look at the end of the house? Because still from this point to this point.
The highest point of that, top of that roof, straight down.
Highest point, straight down. See, that's basically every highest point, straight down.
In other words, you may end up with Ted measuring
And it's really not a, well, I guess with finished grade, it is a point, with natural grade, it's grade line, but reference line.
If I'm looking, if this is the garage door, I'm looking at the end of the house, this point is eight feet back from, from this surface right here. Right? This point right here is sixteen feet back from the front of the house.
And we don't care how far back it is, it's a measurement from that point straight down to, it might be in the middle of the bedroom.
So there's not going to be one reference point?
Or going through the bedroom down to finished grade.
All the way to the basement floor.
Could be.
No.
If it's, if it's natural grade or finished grade, whichever is lower.
Basement floor, if you're going from this point straight down in the house, you're in the basement slot.
Well
The perimeter, we say adjoining the house. We say adjoining the house.
You say, so why don't you measure from this point to finished grade?
That's not the highest point.
But it's, it's, it's the highest vertical point at the perimeter.
And we wanna go from the ridge.
When we talk about a perimeter measurement, we're talking
Yeah, we do. We say all ridges and high peaks.
Yeah, you're saying, so I measure a point vertical
From the highest point down to the adjoining natural or finished grade whichever is higher.
So this is looking at the side of the house. This point right here is eight feet back from that wall.
So is that
That's fine.
But your point adjoining the house is right here, right, not here. You're measuring straight down to this point, not at this other way around. Looking at the so looking at the top of the house, here's, here's the perimeter of the roof. The E of the roof. And then I have a ridge line that comes up like this and a ridge line that comes up like this.
Yep.
And a ridge.
Right.
And a ridge line and a ridge line. So this point right here is not adjacent to the perimeter of the structure. The E is.
Yeah, but we go from the
But it's a reference line.
We get a reference line and it does drop down to that reference line.
Which is
It's a plane. Remember, the natural is a plane and that's what we wanted to do for the
This point right here
It goes down to the plane. Or finished grade point.
But that's my point. So this point right here, if, if this is the garage end of the house, maybe we say finished grade extended through the house.
I mean, I mean, what would solve it would be go back to what we said in the first place. A finished grade plane.
Well, that goes back to the issue. But again, if you're taking that measurement vertical from any point around the perimeter of a structure, this, this ridge line is not around the perimeter of the structure.
We've established a plane. It goes through the whole structure.
But for the low point, you're not referencing, you're not giving a grade plane for the ridge. You're saying, I'm gonna take this measurement, this, this measurement right here on the structure, if you're looking down at the top
No, we're not using that, that point any, anyway.
But you're saying vertical, a vertical measurement.
The highest point on the ridge.
But this point right here
Yeah.
is not around the perimeter of the
It's inside the structure.
Right.
Comes down inside the structure, so you'd have to say
That's why we said plane. Well, you go through the structure.
Only on natural grade, finished grade, we didn't say plane.
I know, that's why I'm saying maybe with
Maybe it's gotta be a finished grade.
But finished grade is a point.
Maybe it's finished grade
Which has been extended
Which has been extended through
Throughout the structure footprint.
Do you find it the exact same way?
To say finished grade extends through the structure. The lowest
What the only reason we use the river, Corbett, is to determine that natural grade plane. We're not using it for the, the
But you're taking a vertical measurement not the perimeter.
Yeah, we are for finished grade.
Yeah.
Oh, for finished, for finished grade. Natural grade, we have a grade plane. Finished grade, we just say adjoining, a natural
But we say through, if we say throughout the structure
Extended through the structure.
We're still, we're creating a plane even though we don't say it.
Finished grade as extended through the structure.
That's the finished grade extending through the structure. The point, highest point is here and it comes down in the middle of the bedroom or the kitchen or whatever.
Or the basement.
But we don't say that.
Well, and that's, that's I think what Ted said though, if we extend
To say finished grade extended through the structure.
Through the structure. We, we're saying essentially the same thing.
We, that's what we approved. Was the natural grade or the finished grade whichever is lower extended through the structure.
Visually projected through the entire footprint of the structure.
That's what we said.
Okay.
Put both of them.
For both of them.
Yeah.
I'm ready for an aye.
Thank you.
You better, better, Corbett.
No, I'm just, I'm just, you know, I'm looking to try and enforce it and this point, Jeremy Brockman, we know him. This point right here over the garage, he's got a twenty-foot room under his garage. And then you got twelve foot sitting in the garage. And then you got a second story above it.
And where do those fit on a natural grade line?
Extended through the structure.
Yeah.
Or finished grade whichever is lowest.
Exactly.
Finished grade adjoining the
This point right here at finished, at lowest finished grade, that point right there is fifty-five feet. that point right there is 55 feet.
Then he wouldn't be able to build it under this roof.
Why? My point is, why not? It doesn't make any difference to the look of the structure. And so if you put that extended through the structure, that grade plane extended through the structure, then you can still do that.
And that's what we've done.
Right, I, but I didn't, I guess I didn't realize it. You say finished grade around the perimeter of the structure.
That was to determine that.
The high point and the low point.
So your grade plane is extended through the structure.
Yes.
Finished grade as well as the natural grade.
Yes.
Alright.
Alright.
We believe in justice.
If you're confused, a lot of people are gonna be confused, Corbett, because you understand this better than most.
But my problem is when I enforce it, I, 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 look, it's, this is what it says. And unless you can change my mind, this is what we go with. And they hate it.
That's fine.
Because I, I take it literally. And, and if this is what we're doing, then we're going to finished grade or natural grade whichever is lowest at this point right here, you're not putting that room under the garage. I don't care.
Now we're saying extended through the structure, so that solves that issue.
Good question.
Thanks, Corbett. Okay, are we ready now?
I think so.
I moved it when you adjourned.
Second.